You ready Rodney?
I'm ready.
Uh, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
We have a quorum. This is a meeting of the Township Trustees. We have to elect someone to run the meeting. Uh, City Clerk has...
I gotcha.
Has the procedure.
For the Township Meeting, the floor is open to anyone, any citizen who is a registered voter, to nominate someone from the floor, or it could come from the desk up here to be a moderator for this session of the Township Meeting. Do I have a nomination from the floor or from the...
Alderman Burris and Alderman Rainey have their lights on.
I'd like to nominate Mayor Tisdale.
Second. Move to close nominations. Second.
They're properly moved and seconded to nominate Mayor Tisdale to be the moderator for this Township Meeting. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, thank you all very much. You're welcome. Okay. I can't raise my right hand very well Rodney, if you want to swear me out.
Do your left hand.
That's part of the criteria, that they can raise their hands.
Okay. Let's hear something. Somebody asked me to beg for hers. Okay, I'd blow my heart. Raise your hands, wait. I do solemnly swear that...
I do solemnly swear that...
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties...
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties...
...of moderator at this town hall, Township Meeting.
As moderator at this Township Meeting.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Oh yours.
Uh, thank you. We have ordinance 53010, proposed budget and appropriation ordinance for town purposes for the year ending March 31st, 2011. Would anyone like to discuss it or make a motion? Please?
Move approval of ordinance 53-0-10. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the budget. Seeing no lights, City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Burris.
Aye.
Trustee Fisk.
Aye.
Trustee John Baptiste.
Aye.
Trustee Nguyen.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Holmes.
Aye.
Trustee Mark.
Aye.
Trustee Grover.
Aye.
Trustee Rainey.
No.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes, the budget is approved. Uh, could we have a motion to adjourn the Township Meeting?
Move to adjourn the Township Meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Now, if I could find the other agenda, we keep in good shape. Uh, thank you. Next, the mayor has no public announcements, oh, except thank you to everyone who sent cards because I broke my elbow, but it is an insignificant break, so I don't have a cast anymore. So, thank everyone. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the lion that was chasing you has been caught and has been dealt with appropriately. Just one public announcement and presentation with the budget that was adopted back in February, we have a renewed effort with the city's volunteer program. I've asked Shanee Jackson of our staff to take on additional responsibility as the city's new volunteer coordinator, and she is here this evening to give you an overview of our work thus far and some of the things you can look for in the coming months. Ms. Jackson, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and also City Clerk. I'm Shanee Jackson, the management analyst and project coordinator for the city of Evanston, and I'd like to give a brief overview of the volunteer program that we have. I'd like to begin by providing a brief overview of the program by starting off by saying how the program was began in March of 2010. This is a city initiative that was developed by the 2010-2011 budget, and it was developed so that city services and programs could be strengthened and supported by our volunteers. And at the same time, the volunteer coordinator position was created to develop this program and coordinate the city government volunteer opportunities that we have. The city has also made an outreach of, to our various organizations throughout the community, in attempt to discuss the collaboration of the volunteer efforts that we have. These volunteer efforts involve building an engaged community and providing resources to our volunteers and organizations, and this will give us a centralized volunteer program or community hub. The initial steps that we've taken so far has also been developing the volunteer webpage, which was recently implemented. This is where interested citizens can go online and view volunteer opportunities and also register as a volunteer. Currently, we approximately have about sixty individuals in three groups that have registered to volunteer with the city of Evanston. And as we know, the city of Evanston is populated with citizens of diverse talents, perspectives, and contributions that can be utilized by our city government, and these citizens help us to do more. As you can see, that helps...
Shanee, you have a question. Alderman John Baptiste.
In the last slide, you say you have sixty individuals in three groups.
Correct.
Into that a little more, what, what three groups...
These are basically volunteer groups. They might come from church-based organizations or not-for-profit organizations. Some of these have also been out of state. We had a volunteer group from Iowa that came and helped with the Energy Star pledge project.
Oh, okay. All right. So, groups of individuals have come together to volunteer...
Correct. And then individually, we've had sixty individuals, and they've been a variety of age groups, from the youth to the seniors.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman John Baptiste, let me, we should probably reiterate that these are not the first sixty individuals ever to volunteer for the city of Evanston.
Correct.
This, you know, we, we are fortunate to have many volunteers currently working in our Parks Recreation and Community Services Department and other departments throughout the city, but in this new initiative, those are sixty new volunteers who, who may have done things with us previously but have been reconnected with us, and I think that's one of the things, as you'll hear from Shanee, we're trying to do, is we're trying to, you know, support and maintain those folks who have been volunteers with us, but really to look for opportunities to bring new people into the city to do, to do work with us.
And we're also able to track these volunteers. The presentation, we'll get in a little bit later, as to why it's important to track these volunteers that we have. So, what these volunteers do is they help support the department and program initiatives that we have. They also complement and support paid staff, they expand the level of public services beyond the tax support limitations that we have, and also build a social capital. And so, we know that nationally, nationally, this human capital has been utilized with many local governments during times of budget constraints and limited city resources. And just to reiterate again, what this volunteer program is trying to do is connect, support, and enhance city and community services through our volunteers. Regarding our partnerships, earlier in the overview, I briefly mentioned the city's initiative of reaching out to our various community organizations. This entails reaching out to our citizens, the education sector, and our community organizations again, in order to build this volunteer network of community. This partnership will encourage and interchange resources, our services, and the expertise that we have that will result in a more productive and innovative community. The volunteer opportunities that we have, they will continue to enhance our youth programs, senior programs, the police and fire programs and initiatives that we have, and also public services. And this has consisted of front desk greeter volunteer opportunities that we have out there, possibly the crossing guard, safer routes to school program, volunteers, dental clinic volunteers, for our boards and commissions, and special events such as our upcoming community The next steps that we have for this volunteer program. Outreach. Recently, city staff has put forth somewhat of like a soft push of the volunteer program. We've notified the registered volunteers that we have from the online website regarding the relaunching of the volunteer webpage and current volunteer opportunities that we have. Right now, our focus is trying to brand the program. We're trying to implement the best practices and utilizing this volunteer Evanston logo, which will identify this program. By using this volunteer Evanston logo, volunteerism in Evanston will continue to be promoted and encouraged in our community, and that'll be through our city highlights, the website, banners and posters throughout the community, e-newsletters, and our listservs, and also public service announcements. Another step that we're working on is managing the program. Volunteers will be managing this centralized web-based program. It's capable of providing reports, communications, and volunteer deployment. So, the volunteer system will allow a volunteer coordinator to search all volunteer profiles, communicate with all of our volunteers, manage all the opportunities, and match volunteers to a specific volunteer opportunity that they qualify for or they've expressed an interest for. And then, it will also allow us to report the hours for citywide volunteers. Regarding the city departments, they'll be able to search for department volunteers based on the customized needs for that program. They'll also be able to schedule their volunteers and communicate with their volunteers either by email and also US mail for those that are not able to have access to the internet. So, for our volunteers, they're going to be able to see a user-friendly website, and they'll be able to search city and community volunteer opportunities, and they can use keywords that will pick up their, that will pop up their interests or skill sets that they may have. And they can also complete an online application, register, register for volunteer opportunities, and even schedule their volunteer opportunities that they have and register as a group. Retaining these volunteers. Once we've fully implemented this volunteer program, city staff knows that we have to work on retaining the volunteers, which can, which can be an issue. So, supporting these volunteers by providing the resources and materials that will help them take on the task that they're expected to do or that we've assigned them to do, provide orientation and training such as workshops, and provide them with information and awareness regarding our municipal services and operations. We'll also host volunteer appreciation events, which is key, providing award certifications, a spotlight of a volunteer for the month on our webpage, and also participate in National Volunteer Week. We'll also promote volunteer registration at certain city events. We will, we plan on having a volunteer table at our upcoming community picnic. We'll also seek ambassadors and leaders in the community, and most importantly, ask, ask, ask. Informal recruitment is always good. So, this concludes my presentation, and again, we can have, anyone can contact me if they have questions, or visit the website at www.cityovevston/volunteer. And if there's any questions...
Thank you. Alderman Grover has question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, very much. I assume, I, I looked through the list of opportunities, and it looks like actually a lot of fun, some really interesting volunteer opportunities. Have you connected, I assume, with our high school and our university about, through their community service offices to...
Yes, we currently have a...
To reach out to them.
A focus group that involves District 202, District 65, Northwestern University, and the Evanston Community Foundation. So, we're working with them.
That was my next question, was the foundation, which has a big network of...
Yes, and they've been very helpful.
Potential volunteers as well. Great. And if we encounter anyone who's looking to become engaged, involved, we should send them to you?
Yes, and I'll be happy to help them.
City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, one piece of this, which I think is a real critical, important piece, is something we're looking to do in collaboration with the partners that Ms. Jackson just mentioned, and that is a web component to this. The days of people being able to volunteer Tuesday and Thursday from three to five are to come, and many communities have worked together to develop a, a web application, and there are several private providers of web applications like this, and we've just, I think as recently as last week...
Yes.
With our community partners have been evaluating these applications so that multiple agencies could join in on this. So, the YW, the YM, YOU, the alphabet soup of organizations that support Evanston could join in with this. So, as an Evanston resident, they could, individual could go online, look for an opportunity, and it may be with the YWCA, it may be with the city of Evanston's Parks and Recreation Department. It won't, the individual won't have to know which agency to look for. If they're in Evanston and want to help out in Evanston, they'll be able to find opportunities, and those could be opportunities that are one-time, they could be opportunities that, for groups, they could be opportunities for groups, and maybe you're an individual. Maybe there's an opportunity to, to help build a website, and you need twenty people, and, you know, if you're only one, you can sign up for one, and you'd be able to see how many people have already signed up for that. So, there's some very powerful tools out there that can not only be helpful to the city government, but really helpful to the whole community, and we hope to come back to you, I imagine, Ms. Jackson, in the early fall...
Yes.
With an option to do this, and of course, we're looking for others to pay for it. So, our goal is to come back to you and say that we're moving forward with this and that our piece hopefully is either zero or a very small piece, and that many of our community partners then would be able to step up and join us to make this resource available that they would not only be able to use, but then for organizations and agencies that have no resources to do this, they also would be equal opportunity, anyone in Evanston then would have that ability to, to put those opportunities on a website and have residents sign up for that. So, we're very excited about that next piece, and I think as a city government, while we have made use of volunteers very well in certain parts of the organization, there are other parts of the organization, I think, where we can absolutely improve our use of volunteers. So, having a web component to this, I think, will be very helpful, and we're very excited that we think we're about three or four months away from being able to move forward with that.
Alderman John Baptiste?
I wanted to compliment Ms. Jackson for this, this roadmap. It's, it's very thoughtful, and I think that one of the areas that you talked about is outreach to organizations in the community. I think when we have particular projects, programs, or events that we're working on, you know, there are lots of organizations that are out there who may want to volunteer. So, I'm very impressed, and I look forward to ramping it up to get more volunteers.
Definitely.
Alderman Grover?
Yeah, I think the opportunity for opportunities is huge here. It's a, the, our nonprofits have been talking for years about crafting, as you said, Mr. Bobquid, so kind of a clearinghouse for volunteer opportunities, and haven't been able to figure out how to fund it, and the other challenge is keeping it updated. As volunteer opportunities fade away or, or the position ends, who's responsible then for removing it from the list of opportunities and so that it's really truly a current listing? So, it would be quite exciting if we had something like that.
I agree. No problem.
Alderman Nguyen?
Alderman Grover has just reminded me of a particular junior at the high school who, his service project is that he does precisely that for high schools, the, the high school students at ETHS. He maintains a website that shows current volunteer opportunities, and as many of us know, there are community service hour requirements for a number of the high school students, and I can, when my son gets back, I can, I can find out what Nick's last name is, and I can put you in touch with him.
We're currently in touch with District 202 and...
Okay. Right. And it was, I mean, so what, that's his service project, is that he essentially maintains the website with all of the current information. He's the go-to person. So, we need, obviously, to just incorporate all of that because there are all those students over there, and they need community service hours, and there are a lot of parents who are trying to figure out which direction to point them in.
And, and what we also want to do is incorporate within this program or this web-based program where it will also assign certain credit hours to certain, to particular volunteer opportunities that can relate to high school students, so that will be considered.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Done a terrific job. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, two additional items. First, at your place this evening, you'll see a flyer regarding the community picnic, and just to remind everyone when that is, it is Sunday, August the 22nd. It will run from noon till 5:00 PM. I'm afraid I do not have a schedule yet of the Dunk Tank, but we will work on that. I know that it's usually first come, first served. Oh, the city, city manager's first? All right. At one o'clock? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gainer. So, that is moving forward. Many of the same events and things that people have come to look and enjoy, the Jesse White Tumblers, the Line Dance Divas, the Mount Zion Choir, a balloon artist, the Evanston North Shore Community Choir, all scheduled to, to be there. So, we're very excited about that, and there's flyers here at your desk, and will be also available around the community. The second item, which I'd like to talk about, which I cannot pull up on my computer, but Alderman Wilson's been nice enough to pull it up instead, is the 37th Annual National Night Out, and that is scheduled for next Tuesday evening, August the 3rd. This is something that we participate in with the leadership of the Police Department. There are a whole variety of events scheduled, and would encourage people to go to our website, www.cityovevston.org, for more details about that. So, August is here, believe it or not, and lots of interesting, exciting things. The Lakefront Art Festival, I believe, is the, the eighth, the seventh and eighth of August, and that's also coming up. So, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two items. First, I want to make a comment on a presentation that was done by Mr. Frank Dool, Senior Government Affairs Manager for Comcast. When he was here on the 12th, he made announcement that Comcast was doing their new initiative, which was World of More, where they say that they were offering each family three adapters for their boxes because they were, be, making new additions to their system. He also made a comment that this would be affected to, if your TVs are plugged into the wall directly. But when we went to get our free boxes, they only gave you two free boxes, and the third one is, was charged $1.99. Then, it said that your TVs are plugged in directly to the wall, but when you get these boxes, your TV has to be plugged into a cable. So, if you do not have a cable connected to your TV, the boxes will not do you any good. Just thought I'd let you know that. So, be very, make sure that your boxes are plugged into a cable before you go get it, and there's only two boxes per household. Then, I also got a communication from AT&amp;T about the U-verse. There's going to be a possible change, programming change for the AT&amp;T U-verse TV customers. This will take effect somewhere around August 31st, and it will affect the channels of the Hallmark, Channel 176 in the U-100 package, and also the movie channels, number 794 and 1794 in HD, and also the U-300 packages. So, be very aware of this change in the AT&amp;T U-verse programming. That concludes my communications, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman John Baptiste?
Can we ask the Comcast representative to come back and clarify those issues and, you know, because it's, it would be misleading if what Mr. Green is, his experience were, if that's consistent across the board. So, I think it'd be good to get clarification. I'm sure a lot of people rely on that.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman John Baptiste, certainly, we can do that off agenda, if you like, if, if there's a reason that staff feels it needs to, if there is a problem broader than this, we can, we'll come back, but we'll see if we can make some adjustments.
Well, he could come back and get his three minutes and clarify the situation, because I'm sure that a lot of seniors who got this kind of information are trying to use it.
Again, this is the first I'm hearing of the City Clerk's difficulties. We get four to five calls a day in our office on cable issues and have not received one regarding these box issues. So, we'll work to assist the City Clerk, and if there are additional issues, we'll bring it back on the night.
Thank you. Next is Citizen Comment. I see only one person signed up, Assessor Bonnie Wilson.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm Bonnie Wilson, Evanston's Township Assessor. I'm just here to remind all the taxpayers of Evanston that the Cook County Assessor is now open for appeals, and everyone should have gotten their reassessment in the mail. If they feel that their assessments are not in uniformity with the other homes in the neighborhood, or if you feel your home has been overevaluated, or if you have other questions about your reassessment, please do not hesitate to call our office. We are now taking appointments for appeals. We see about twenty-five people a day, so it's fairly important that you not walk in and you make an appointment. Our office number is 847-332-2465, or 847, 846 Dodge, the corner of Dodge and Main. We are open from 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, and we would like to make an announcement that we will be open on a Saturday morning, August the 7th, from 9:00 to 12:00, if you can't come in during the week. Or you can go online to the Cook County Assessor's website at thecookcountyassessor.com, put in your parcel number, and go to Appeals. If you need more information, please do not hesitate to call the assessor's office. The appeal time is open until August the 16th, and also, I'd like to mention, if you have a condo building, that any units over six units, it's better to appeal as an association and hire an attorney to help you with your appeals. I also would like to thank the trustees of the township for approving the township budget, and this will give me the opportunity to continue to be the advocate for the taxpayers of Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Assessor, did you, have you found that many, many people had a reduction in their assessed valuation?
There are several, there are people that, that have reductions. However, when we, when we go on the Cook County Assessor's website, we also see that even though they got a reduction, they still might be higher than other properties in their neighborhood. So, it's still good to look to make sure that you're not higher than...
But it, I don't recall ever a reassessment where I've heard of so many reductions. However, in talking to people with commercial properties, I've noticed huge increases there, and also multifamily rental buildings.
I know that assessments went down twelve percent to media, but there's people that are higher and lower, so I would...
Do you handle commercial?
No, we don't.
What do those people do?
There's a packet that they can get online. They can go on the website and look under Commercial Appeals. And there's a packet that they can get, that they can fill out and get on, online, that they can appeal their assessments. And that I'm going to suggest to some of the people that have called our office. There's a five-page packet I think they need to fill out before August the 16th.
Thank you very much. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 12. Administration and Public Works Committee recommends your approval of the following items. The city payroll through July 18 in the amount of $2,398,970.23. The city of Evanston bills through July 27 in the amount of $1,856,689.1. First item for consideration under purchases is item 3, A31, approval of a contract award to Argon Electric Company for the Church Street South Park lighting upgrade. This is in the amount of $104,548. And it will all eventually be reimbursed through grants. Next item is approval of a contract award to Arthur Wyler for the AT&amp;T VRAD screening project. This is in the amount of $39,709.88. Next, we request your approval of a contract for a high lift pumping station roof replacement at the water plant. This is, award is to G.E. Rutherford Company in the amount of $76,378. Next is approval of a lease for nine linear copiers from United Business Solutions. This is an addendum to the 2009 contract, and it is a savings of 50%. And the amount of the annual cost is $31,498. Next, we request your approval of a renewal of a single-source police service agreement with Motorola, and the annual cost is $38,960.4. This is paid out of the 911 fund. Next item is being held, A36, which is the Police and Firefighter Pension Actuarial Report. We request your approval, however, of 3.7, which is the March 1, 2010 Gatsby 45 Other Post-Employment Benefit Actuarial Report. The committee requests your approval of Change Order Number One to the 2010 Water Main Replacement and CIP Resurfacing Project for an additional paving by ALAMP Concrete Contractors in the amount of $142,112 to take the Oakton Street job from Hartree through to 2424 Oakton. This is due to deterioration of that surface. Next item is A5, which is approval of Change Order, wait, let me see, Change Order Number One for the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center Roof Replacement Project in the amount of This is due to finding some severely damaged wood framing in the gutter area. Next item is Resolution 47R10, which is the Bridge Street Project Phase One Engineering Contract Award, authorizing the city manager to sign the local agency agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation. Next item is Resolution 48R10, which authorizes the city manager to enter into a co-lease agreement with Sarah Kaiser and Elena Kaiser for use of Studio B9 at the Nois Cultural Arts Center. This would be through March, will be up for renewal on March 1, 2011. Next item is being held and will be addressed by the committee chair. Planning and Development. This item is, for introduction, it's Ordinance 56010. It grants a special use for a type-two restaurant at 816 Church Street in the, in the D3 Downtown Core Development Zoning District and is called Five Guys. Next item is under Other Committees, and this is Ordinance 58010, which grants an extension until September 12, 2015, of the electric ordinance to Commonwealth Edison. Next, under Appointments, Appointments to the Arts Council, Daniel Lornitas, to the Commission on Aging, Susan Cantner, Carol Wade, Jane Wickencamp, to the Human Relations Commission, Kenneth Rogers, to the Lad Arbor Rhythm Committee, Jerry Freeman, to the Plan Commission, Quasi Edmund Steele. Madam Mayor, with that, I ask council adoption of the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Winn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The consent agenda passes. Alderman?
I'm, I'm wondering, should I have read the township budget, or did the trustees pass that independently?
I believe the trustees passed that. Where's our attorney?
It's done.
It's done. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. With regard to item A3.6, which was a request that we approve, review and approve the March 1, 2010 Actuarial Valuation for usage in the 2009-2010 Comprehensive Annual Finance Report, and for usage in the 2011 Tax Levy for Police and Firefighter Funding Purposes. The committee felt that it needed further clarification of certain points. Particularly, we wanted to get a sense as to what other light communities are doing, how they're handling this particular issue, what kind of actuarial assumptions are being made. And so, those are some of the examples of items that we've asked for. So, those will return to us in two weeks, and at that time, we'll have a fuller discussion at the council level. So, for now, it's held in committee. The next item is item A8, which is a request that we adopt Ordinance 55-0-10. This is a one-day license request that would change the existing permit to allow for sale of liquor in addition to beer, beer and wine. The current one-day license doesn't allow for the inclusion of the sale of liquor. The committee felt that that particular one-day ordinance was one that would open the door for entities other than this business to pursue expansion of the use of this license to, in a way that might be difficult to regulate. So, we hold it in committee for better clarification, to bring back some scenarios, other scenarios that we think might take advantage of this situation. In particular, there were questions about whether or not frat houses, private parties might take advantage of this to sell liquor where that was not allowed. So, it's being held in committee for clarification, and we'll get back to the full council in two weeks.
I'd like to say one thing about that. If I have any discretion as the Liquor Commissioner to refuse one-day licenses, I would be turning down frat houses, et cetera, on those. I'm happy to have you explore whether I have the ability to turn them down. I just thought I'd let you know.
Yes. Our city attorney will be addressing that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as Liquor Commissioner, you have full discretion.
Oh, I always love that. And then there's a but.
No, there is, there is no but. You have full discretion to turn down any proposed licensee and also to revoke without cause if the circumstances warrant it.
Thank you.
Is an if.
There's just an if, Madam Mayor.
Just letting you know my intentions, Alderman.
That completes.
Thank you. Next, Alderman Rainey, Planning and Development.
Oh, I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Excellent. And Alderman Fisk, you have nothing. All right, we are at Call of the Wards. Alderman Burris.
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank city staff for two recent events at Dawes Park on the lake, the Ethnic Arts Festival, and the continuing Starlight Concerts. I'm just very, very impressed with how well the organizing has proceeded for both of those events. The public loves them, the neighbors love them. And I got to stand in for you, Madam Mayor, and at the Ethnic Arts Festival, and hope, hope I did you proud.
Good, I'm sure you did.
And, thank you. And, but it's, it's, it's really wonderful. There, you, you miss how complicated these events are and how organization plays such an important role in making them so enjoyable for, for all the attendees, as well as the folks who are participating and the exhibitors. So, thank you, city staff, for that. Finally, I want to belatedly express my thanks to Lehman Walker, and by extension, Wally, to you for hiring Lehman. In, in the experience of most first ward residents, Lehman was a breath of fresh air. He was a marvelous person who actually took the initiative to read some of the city agreements that we have with developers and came to meetings well-prepared, but was also just fair and open with everyone. I don't remember ever going to so many meetings with a city staff person where everyone felt that they had gotten a fair shake and were listened to. And it was wonderful. And I'm looking back on probably 20 years of experience in these, in these matters. So, Wally, thank you very much. We're certainly hoping that we find someone of similar stature and quality. And Lehman, wherever you are in University City, Missouri, best wishes to you.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Well, I think that Alderman Fisk, you've expressed our sentiments generally. Lehman worked well with the west side of town, some of the initiatives that were beginning to take place. The Plaza, he took interest in, you know, meeting regularly with the businesses there and thought that, you know, the kinds of initiative and creativity that he demonstrated were, I was looking forward to, to, to his leadership in some other areas as well. So, you're right, Wally, congratulations, but, you know, you've got some good research to do nationally to find us a good person like that. I want to encourage everybody to really, particularly the community groups, to come out and participate in National Night Out and show positive presence and try to see if we could get a message out, and try to see if we could reach out to some of our youth in the community. As we read the crime, crime bladders in, in, coming out of the Police Department every day, we see a recurring pattern of certain youth, particularly male black, who, black youth, who are involved in criminal activities. Now, I know that's not a general issue because, I mean, we've had a number of events, number of groups that have come before the council, who are involved in all kinds of positive things. But too many times, when you read the crime bladder, you see the same recurring kind of profile. And I think that National Night Out is for the purpose of reaching out, bringing the positives, and standing up together and saying that we will have safe communities. And I want to say, beyond National Night Out, we as a city, I was very proud to see the kind of presentation we made on the youth issue. And I think that the council has to stand behind the city manager in terms of whatever initiative that can be redoubled, to make sure that there's an outreach to the kids who are falling through the cracks. Now, of course, we've got to think of proper policing all the time, but for some time now, we've been saying that enforcement is much more expensive than prevention. So, let's try to work hard, to reach out, to do the proper programming, to do the counseling, and to intentionally impact the lives of these youth. So, let's come out for National Night Out, but let's stay vigilant, and let's organize, let's outreach to our youth so everybody can be positive.
Thank you. Alderman Winn?
I'll be very brief. I echo Alderman Fisk and Alderman Jean Baptiste on working with Lehman Walker and the remarkable small, remarkable amount that he did in the small time he was here. I just want to add that he also had the most wonderful laugh that took you so much by surprise, and everyone who was in the meeting with you, that it really broke a lot of tension in a number of meetings I was in with him. So, University City has gotten their act together and did a smart thing, and it's our loss, but I wish him well.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. And in the fourth ward, in the Nichols neighborhood, there is going to be a group of people meeting at 7:00 in front of the Nichols School. And again, that's August 3rd, so hope to see a lot of people there. If you are planning to organize or are interested in organizing a particular event or something along those lines that night, let me know about it so I can participate and help promote that as well. And I also want to thank the YMCA and Northwestern for hosting the youth triathlon over the weekend. I had the pleasure of attending with one of my children. It was a great event, and I appreciate all of those efforts for promoting a, an active and healthy lifestyle for our kids.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo too about Mr. Walker because he was really, I told him, he was a whirlwind. He came eight months and did just wonderful things, particularly for us on the west side, so we will all miss him. And yes, Wally, you do have big shoes to fill. I just would like to say, those of you who may not have a National Night Out event plan, please join us at Church and Dodge. We will have the event, and we start at 6:00, but at 9:00, we will have a candlelight visual for those young people who have lost their lives and truly emphasize the violence that has happened in our community and what can we do to stop that. So, if you are not doing anything else, please come by and join us in that at 9:00 on Tuesday evening. I'd also just like to congratulate again firefighters at Local 742 and the Fireman Park Neighbors on the wonderful dedication of Fireman's Park. And if you haven't been, please go by and take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. It is a beautiful park. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would like to thank the Evanston Police Department for recent work they did in tracking a recent batch of car burglaries. I know that some of the information they gained from some of the residents helped a lot, and they were able to track it in a very short amount of time with evidence or items in hand. So, great work, incredible timing. And I think a lot of this came from a neighborhood organization, and I would too echo what the city manager and Alderman Jean Baptiste have said. These are very important groups, the Neighborhood Watch Groups and the National Night Out that has evolved into some of these Neighborhood Watch Groups. We had four in the sixth ward last year. I'm hoping we'll have twice that many this year. We have increased our number of watch groups, and I think that there are some other events planned. So, if you haven't looked into this yet, do so. Go to the city website, cityofevanston.org. There's a whole bunch of information from a link right on the front page, right at the top, so check it out. It's, it's a nice night. It's a, it's a good thing to participate in. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, congr-
First, congratulations to Lehman Walker for being appointed City Manager of University City, Missouri. They're smarter than we thought they were. And Lehman, when we have coffee tomorrow morning, I'll still be recruiting you back to Evanston, just so you know. We have an anniversary, too, to note, and that is, we're coming up on Wally's first year as our city manager. So, it has been a very full, busy, positive year, and we're glad to have you, Wally. It'll turn out to be one of the best votes I've ever cast, I'm sure, and you have hired a great team. I still remember when Alderman Rainey and Alderman Tindham came back from their trip to recruit you and do their due diligence, how enthusiastic they were, and it's all come true. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I did already think everybody said about Lehman for Evanston. He's going to be severely missed by the south end of town, but I will tell you that the economic development planners that we have, especially the one that I'm working with, Johanna Niden, just an amazing amount of progress we've made in the south end of town. So, I really appreciate that, and the Howard Street Business District is getting organized for the first time, and I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, real estate, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2, subsection C1, C5, C6, and C21.
Second. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes, and we will adjourn to executive session.